I will call for order the February 8th, 2011 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and County Council, Tony DeBuff, will lead us in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ann, would you read our meeting procedures, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, February 8th, 2011. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thanks, Ann. Next is the time for public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind we can take no action. So if there's anyone from the public, please come forward, and/or anyone who wants to address the board on a public comment, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we will go to supervisor committee reports. Jack?
Yes, I'd just like to recognize a prospective appointee to the District One position on the County Parks Commission, Mr. Gregory Todd Fiyard. Mr. Fiyard is a former Deputy Attorney General with the State Department of Justice, also the immediate past president of the Placer County Bar Association, and is a resident of District One. Welcome, Mr. Fiyard.
Welcome. Thanks, Jack. Anyone else?
No, I haven't.
Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. This is a group of motions to be done all in one, but if somebody would like us to pull something for a specific discussion, we'd be happy to do that.
Yes, I'd like to pull items 12A and C, and also items 16A and B.
I'm sorry, Jack, 16?
A and B.
Okay. Are there any other requests for consent item removals? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion on the remaining consent agenda?
Move approval of remaining items.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the items as changed as discussed. Roll call, Ann.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Motion passes. So we'll first go to 12A. Dry Creek Community Park Project.
Good morning, Chairman Wygant and members of your board. This is Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services. With me as well, Rob Unholz, our Capital Improvements Manager. This item before you today is to ratify Amendment Number One for the agreement with Baker Williams Engineering for professional design services for the Dry Creek Community Park, located on Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan area, and authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute the amendment, increasing the contract by $40,301 for total contract costs not to exceed of $201,462. On January 26th of 2010, your board approved the agreement with Baker Williams in an amount not to exceed $161,161 for the professional design services for the Dry Creek Community Park. Build out of the proposed park would provide two baseball diamonds, two soccer fields, two tennis courts, volleyball court, horseshoe pits, picnic facilities, snack bar, restrooms, playground, and trails. During the course of the design, there were several items that were identified that were required to be completed but not in that original scope. These scope changes include the development of design standards for the park kiosk and signage, compliance with the California Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance, replacement of turf areas with lower maintenance planter areas, irrigation modifications, and additional structural engineering for the tennis court fencing and backstops. So in order to complete the design of the park, it is recommended that your board ratify the attached Amendment Number One to the agreement with Baker Williams Engineering for these design services. Staff will return to your board for approval of plans and specifications and authorization to bid the project in this coming spring, with the construction anticipated start thereafter. Again, Rob is here. If there are any particular questions that your board might have?
Yes, thank you very much for your recounting of the background of this particular project. I just get a little bit concerned when I see a design escalation right around 25 percent of the total estimated budget, and I just wanted to know what the issue was with regards to these particular items not being in the original contact contracts scope.
Okay. I think I'll let Rob get into the detail of it, but again, generally through the course of design, there were some items that were identified that had not been picked up in the original scope and were really essential to the project, but I think you can talk more specifically.
Well, just to, before you answer, were they issues that came up during the course of the design, or were they overlooked? I guess I'm just trying to find a clarification there.
Some of the issues did come up during the course of the design as it unfolded. Some were responses to, one was a response to legislation that went into effect January 1st, 2010, that wasn't caught through the negotiation of the original contract, which was executed on the 26th of January, so it was bad timing. And the landscape turf area replacement and requisite irrigation modifications did unfold during the design, and that was in response to long-term operational and maintenance efficiencies and costs, working with the Parks Division and going over what the long-term maintenance obligations would be. And pretty typical in a lot of projects, we tend, are tending to reduce those irrigation-intensive, water-intensive, maintenance-intensive types of landscape, so that should result in a long-term cost savings and staff efficiency for that park.
With the approval, hypothetically, if this is to be approved, what percentage of completion are those design documents?
They're in plan check currently. The buildings have gone through. The building department, very few comments on that. The building department will be reviewing the structural for the fencing for the tennis courts and the backstops.
By saying that they're in plan check, does that mean that they're over 90 percent completed?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And item 12C?
Take action.
Oh, thank you, Ann, we do have to take action. Tony? So what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the amendment just discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 12C.
Thank you. Item 12C is the similar design agreement ratifying Amendment Number Two to the agreement with Madsen, Flathman, Dameron, and Babcock. They're the architects of Architectural and Engineering Services for the Dry Creek Fire Station Apparatus Bay Edition, which is located at 8350 Cook Riola Road, and authorize the Chairman to execute the amendment, increasing the contract by $8,500 for total contract costs not to exceed of $119,500. And just as the background, May 12th of 2009, the agreement was initiated with, by your board, to perform the architectural and engineering services for the design of this addition to the apparatus bay. Based on the original scope of the work, the construction cost was estimated at $556,420. Additional work was required to provide value engineering changes to reduce the project costs. This required modifications to the architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical design and drawings. The work resulted in a modified scope of work that is expected to provide an estimated reduction in construction costs of approximately $150,000. And I might add that Rui Cunha is here as well, and he's been engaged in this if you have any questions on the operational side of that discussion. In order to proceed, it is recommended that your board ratify this Amendment Number Two to the original contract with MFDB. So if there are any specific questions?
And just to summarize, we have a request for $8,500 contract increase, but conversely, we have a reduction in value engineering of $150,000. Always happy to talk about creating value. Could you speak to what types of changes have been made to the design to create that value savings?
Sure. The original scope involved creating, adding an additional apparatus bay for water tender that the fire department is, I think they have taken possession of or will be this And that also required extending the existing pavement on that side of the building to allow the apparatus to circulate around the building and into the backs of the bays. So what this value engineering did is, instead of adding a complete third apparatus bay, we've added 12 feet to the existing two apparatus bays to the front of the fire station, which allows them to stack the apparatus, similar to, and I think in the process, as I recall, it was brought up that they do a similar thing at the casino fire station, where they were able to fit them all in in two bays. So it resulted in the $150,000, which was savings on additional paving as well as structure.
Thank you.
Okay. Pleasure of the board?
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the item just discussed, staff with regards to the amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 16A and B, revenue sharing?
Just wanted to make a general comment again, that the funds that are allocated to District One have been depleted, and I would still appreciate having some type of a discussion about the revenue share in light of our financial position and quite possibly what burdens we could be, have placed upon us from the state, and hopefully, you know, maybe during these upcoming budget discussions, that might be a time to have that chat. That's it.
Jack, would you like that earlier as compared to later, or would you want it woven into the next planned budget discussion?
I think early, on the, as early as we can. That would probably be preferable.
Okay.
Just for the board's information, we do have a pending schedule of budget workshops, March 8th, 22nd, March 8th as well as 22nd, and your next meeting in February, so I think we could probably weave this discussion item into those.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the two revenue sharing items that are pretty self-explanatory on item 16A and B. Pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the two revenue sharing items identified. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So that's three ayes and one abstention.
So next, let's go to our first department item, Facility Services Efficiency Block Grant.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services. The item before you today is a follow-up on our submittal to an energy grant from 2009, and a specific recommendation to your board is to take the following actions regarding that Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, which is project number 4850. The first is to accept a modified project list for inclusion in the capital project as described in your Exhibit A. And the second is to approve the attached budget revision, which appropriates $606,540 from the CEC grant, and $326,473 from Miss Lanes County Building Project Number 4907 to provide full funding for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, which is project number 4850. As a matter of background, again, on December 8th of 2009, your board adopted a resolution regarding the federal Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, which is administered by the California Energy Commission, and that authorized staff to submit an application for the grant, and authorized the Department of Facility Services to accept a grant award, which is set by the federal government as an amount of $606,540. The Energy Commission has now awarded that grant to the county of Placer, and approved a modified project list for this grant. In getting to that modified list, staff worked closely with our partners, which are PG&E and Motherload Energy Consultants, to put together the feasibility study and a list of potential projects for inclusion in the grant. The grant turned out to have specific requirements that restrict the type of project that can be included, and these are energy efficiency improvements that meet guidelines for cost-effectiveness, which is measured in energy savings per grant dollar. These types of projects identified in the grant include air conditioning equipment replacement, thermostats, lighting and air conditioning controls, and devices to monitor and reduce energy consumption. The grant also includes requirements for accounting, reporting, prevailing wages, bio-American, historic clearance, other conditions as set forth by the federal government. This grant covers purchase of equipment, as well as staff time to install and monitor and administer the grant. The grant construction must be completed by this calendar year, and they will provide all funding by 2012. In order to satisfy the refinements made by the California Energy Commission to the grant program, it was necessary to modify the list of projects as previously approved by your board. There are two projects that were window replacement projects, and they did not score as highly in this grant ranking system, and they also had, did not meet other environmental clearance requirements of the grant. So funding in the grant for the window projects was reallocated to the other projects in our grant, and we kept the same grant dollars essentially. Due to the age and condition of the windows, we still, Facility Services still recommends that window replacement projects proceed as separate capital projects, independent of the grant, which means they're not tied to the federal funding, and we can operate them a little differently. The window replacement projects are located in two buildings, Auburn Historic Courthouse and the Fullwiler Personnel Risk Management Building next door. So fiscal impact, the total cost of these projects in Exhibit A is estimated at $933,013. The maximum amount of the CEC grant is $606,540, which will be paid to the county on a monthly draw basis. And we have partners also with the state, the Administrative Office of the Courts has agreed to contribute approximately $94,092 for projects in Auburn Historic Courthouse. PG&E estimates the value of rebates and incentives to the county to be worth around $132,909. And after factoring in grant funding, AOC contribution or rebates, the county's share is estimated to be around $99,472. Based on that, the payback for the county match is approximately three years. County match for the grant would be funded from the fund balance from Capital Projects Fund, and the attached budget revision appropriates the $606,540 from the CEC grant, and moves $326,473 in appropriations from project number 4907 to project number 4850. At the completion of the project, the funding recovered from the grant and the PG&E rebates and other sources would then be returned to the Miss Lanes County Building Project. So with that, if there's any other questions, I certainly can ask, answer any questions the board may have.
Question for board members. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Joel. Looking at the project scopes, most of these things are self-explanatory, but what are vending controls?
Good question. There's a little device that you can plug in to your wall that essentially is almost like a timing control, that turns down a vending machine so they're not operating on weekends, overnight, and it reduces the amount of energy flowing into a vending machine. I guess they've proven to be very cost-effective. They're really inexpensive, and they have really quick payback.
Okay, excellent. And my second question was, I see that, you know, most of these structures, most of these buildings that we're going to be doing some of this retrofit to are fairly old, including this building. But I note that the Finance Administration Building and CDRC are both on here, which are both fairly new buildings, and it looks as if lighting controls and vending controls, vending controls I get, but why are we coming back really so soon in the life of these buildings and retrofitting, particularly in terms of lighting?
Okay. In the case of the Finance Admin Building, actually, believe it or not, that's about two generations behind in lighting and lighting controls. When that building was designed in 95 or so, you can imagine in 16 years, there's a lot of new technology, so the retrofit there brings in a higher efficiency fixtures, and even the control system of that day can be updated. In the case of CDRC, we found that there are certain areas of that building, particularly the lobby, that could have a better control system. They tend to come on almost too much, they're on too long, and even those fixtures and those long tube light fixtures, there's a new bulb that's come out that's an inexpensive fix. So we had, how we got to all of this, we went through several levels of studies through Motherload and some other analysis, and they found that those would be a higher quantity of savings than maybe retrofitting some older fixtures elsewhere. So that's how they made that list.
Thank you. I appreciate those clarifications.
Jim?
Oh, I just want to express my appreciation to the Administrative Office of the Courts for their $94,000 contribution to the historic Auburn Courthouse. It's very important for the preservation of the history of Placer County, so please extend my thanks.
I will.
Does anyone from the public have any questions? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second is been moved and seconded to approve the budget revision and the grant processes that were discussed for energy efficiency. We'll need a roll call. Ann?
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Joel. Now let's move to our first timed item, which is a presentation by Placer Grown, their year in review, and a recognition of the 2011 Farmer of the Year that was just presented at Saturday's, last Saturday's annual ag conference. We have Karen Kilbrug and Jocelyn Maddox.
President of Placer Grown, this is Jocelyn Maddox, Corporate Manager. I would like to thank Mr. Chairman, members of the board for allowing us to be here today. We just wanted to give you just a brief update on Placer Grown's activities. You've all received our 2010 Year in Review Report, which is available on the placergrown.org website. We have a couple of exciting initiatives for 2011 that I wanted to just touch on briefly. We have, are going to be introducing this spring, a new program called the Master Advocate Program. It's a community agricultural leadership program designed along the lines of the civic leadership programs that many of our communities present, and will be allowing community members to have a real in-depth look at Placer County agriculture, and then go forth into the community active speakers, volunteers, to help us continue to raise the visibility of the importance of agriculture to our county. We also have an initiative with Jan Decker, the Placer County Visitors Bureau, to create an expanded farm-to-table presence in the Placer County Welcome Guide this year. We'll be working with Mr. Decker and with Jeff and Shannon Pauline, the publishers of that. You may have heard that the Agricultural Commissioner has decided not to print the Agricultural Guide this year, so we're looking to pull that information into the Welcome Guide, take advantage of that 70,000 distribution, and create an increased awareness of agriculture, not only to our residents, but to visitors to our county. We're also working with the Amgen Planning Team, and Placer Grown and the Foothill Farmers Market Association are jointly sponsoring the boxes for 650 lunches. We are also working in cooperation with that team to serve as consultants to the caterers, restaurants, and other food providers to create a Placer Grown presence in all of those meals. And as Mr. Wygant mentioned, what we're mostly here this morning is to acknowledge the 2011 Farm Family of the Year. We held our 16th Annual Food and Farm Conference on Saturday. I'd like to thank Mr. Wygant, Mr. Holmes for their presence and participation and support of that event, another successful conference with around 250 participants. So this year, we are very proud to present the 2011 Farm Family of the Year to the Snow Family of Snow Citrus Court, Braylene and Larry Snow, their daughter Shandy Snow, and their son-in-law, Robert Bonk. And I'd like to ask Braylene and Larry to come up right now, and also our board member, Becky Perrell, who's also here today. And board member Dave Chappell is also here as well, so, and I believe Mr. Wygant has a few comments.
Yeah, congratulations. I don't know how long Placer Grown has been doing the recognition of the Agricultural of the Year, but-
It's 1995, I believe.
Thank you. And some of the prior winners, Karen, off the top of your head?
Last year was Brian Kaminsky from the Natural Trading Company, the year before, Stephen Lisa Pills from Pills Produce at Hillcrest, and I believe the year before that was the Handsome. So we really try to acknowledge the people that have made a contribution to Placer County agriculture. Last year, Brian Kaminsky was honored because his farm had the first conservation easement in Placer County, which was a huge achievement and very much in line with the board's commitment to the Placer County Conservation Plan. Braylene and Larry Snow are longtime residents who have managed to make a year-round business from a two-and-a-half acre citrus grove. They really were pioneers in creating value-added products from their mandarins, and they have a successful line of products. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Snow Citrus Court products, their mandarin syrups and barbecue sauce, salad dressings, and a couple of new chocolate products this year as well. So it's really with great pleasure that we present this award every year, and we really do try to leverage this throughout the year in our cooperative marketing program and create opportunities for other residents of Placer County and beyond to appreciate the role that these pioneering families make to agriculture.
Also, on behalf of the board, congratulations and thank you for your efforts. The county has long had policies in place to try to encourage any preserve and protect our agricultural roots, and in the last several years, it's been acknowledged that there's a rich opportunity with our very high disposable income in Placer County that has emerged over the last 20 years or so, to connect local growers with that high disposable income and create a good economic platform, but a much richer quality of life than we would have otherwise. So thank you for your efforts, and we're pleased to see all of this. And for the public, if anybody just wants to spend a great day at an ag conference, even if you're not particularly interested in becoming a farmer yourself, it's really a fun outing, good food, some very interesting presentations. There's an early morning keynote speaker who's always fascinating, and then a lot of breakout sessions, and the event lasts all day long, but you can come and go as you please, I guess. Great lunch in between.
Always Placer Grown, of course.
Always Placer Grown food. So again, thank you, and Jocelyn, recently, there's an emerging Grape Wine Growers Association and effort going forward in Placer County, but there were some huge successes in some awards for some of our vintners, and do you want to mention that?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Supervisor Wygant. Yes, the Placer County Wineries recently took home 21 medals at the San Francisco Chronicle Wine Competition, and that's just a testament to the quality of wine that's being produced in this county, that they can stand up to some of the best. It's one of the oldest and largest, most prestigious competitions in the country. And that was the most recent good news. The vintners have been plugging along and held a wine trail event last December that collected toys for kids and donated about 400 pounds of toys to the Shriners Children's Hospital, and- And the association is actually meeting to agree upon a marketing plan for 2011, so things are moving full steam ahead with the wineries.
So, congratulations to all of you. Thanks, Karen. To the extent that Placer Grown is better organized and the county can interface and more constructively help out in a way that we think's effective and appropriate with taxpayers' dollars, we're happy to do that, and the better all this works, the higher the quality of life is going to be in Placer County. So, again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, Jennifer?
Raylene and Larry, I think the last time I saw you guys, I was actually buying some of that fabulous chocolate.
Yes, you were.
I'd like to thank you. And I have to say, it was marvelous.
Thank you very, very much.
Absolutely marvelous. Congratulations. This is a great award, and you two really, really deserve it. I know it's a family business, so it's more than just you two.
It is. Shandy is at work right now, and Bob is doing the Fountain's Farmers Market.
Terrific. Well, I'm sorry they couldn't...
We'll all be headed next.
Sorry they couldn't be here, but someone needs to earn the dollars.
That's right. Thank you very much.
But really, congratulations to you. Anything that we can do to help you, to help the Placer Grown program, you know, all of you, please feel free, step up, ask. We're all available, willing to meet and talk, and see how we can continue to make a very successful program even more successful, because Robert described this as the roots of agriculture in Placer County, but it's also the branch and the leaf. I mean, it's our future here. It's not just our historical past, but it really is our future. So, my thanks to all of you.
Thank you all very much.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, attended the very nice Placer Farm Conference.
Yes.
The only drawback was I had to go down to Lincoln to the... I wasn't attacked by any fighting zebras, thank goodness.
[inaudible].
But I want to thank you. It was very well done, and I actually sat in on a couple of the classrooms. And also, it's a good chance for us to connect with the farm community. And then, to the Snow family, I see you, I get out a lot, but I see you at a lot of events, and not only are you promoting your business and your products, but you're also promoting Placer County agriculture, and you present a very good face for us.
Thank you.
And I just want to congratulate you for the work that you do.
We're very proud.
Well deserved.
Thank you for all the times that we see you, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to our next department item, Health and Human Services, Community Clinics. Mark, start there, Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Mark Starr here with the Community Health Clinics and Animal Services, and I also have with me Kathy Buchanan, who's Deputy Director of Information Technology for the county. The item before you is requesting approval of a contract to implement electronic medical records in our Placer County Community Clinics. Many of us have had firsthand experience with seeing the advantages of electronic medical records as we visit our healthcare providers. We see our provider enter information right there in the exam room on the console. They're able to order laboratory results and view them right there on the screen. They show us our x-rays, turn our prescriptions in to our pharmacy electronically, and they're ready for us as soon as we can drive over there. Our primary care information is available to specialists and hospitals, and that information can come back to our providers as well, and all of this without paper, other than those few reminders that they have to print out for us when they send us on our way. Of course, many of the advantages of electronic medical record systems, we don't see as patients and customers. There's no paper charts for the staff to sift through, there's nothing to be filed or copied or organized or potentially misplaced. It facilitates electronic scheduling and alerts to providers that something is coming up with a patient. And of course, there's electronic backup and storage, and all of this is done in a secure and confidential manager. Placer County Community Clinics, back in 2008, began our IT improvements in our clinics with the help of the county IT program. We evaluated various products for the entire spectrum of practice management, did a feasibility study report, and undertook structured procurement, and got your approval to go ahead with those products. We acquired much of this through Ochin, which I'll describe in a moment, but included practice management software, managed care software, and pharmacy management software. The contract today is for electronical, electronic medical records, and it's the final piece of the clinic's health data system. Ochin, which I had just mentioned, is the Oregon Community Health Information Network. This is a consortium of nonprofit community clinics in Oregon and California, and their purpose is to support the implementation of IT solutions in the nonprofit community clinics, and we in Placer County are a member of that consortium. Ochin provides the technology and the purchasing power for community clinics to implement high-tech, modern technology solutions, and in fact, the industry-leading software Epicare, which is what's going to be used for electronic medical records, would not otherwise be available to us without that purchasing power, and it's a fraction of the cost that would be out there in the marketplace. They also acquired a recent grant at Ochin to help implement electronic medical records, further reducing our costs. The majority of the contract will be paid for with federal funds, and the implementation of electronic medical records in our clinics is consistent with the direction of many federal initiatives right now, and positions us well for additional federal resources in the near future, such as incentive payments. We ask that you approve this contract with Ochin for electronic medical record implementation in our clinics, and Kathy and I are available for questions.
Questions. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kathy. I'm particularly pleased in here to note that the software that we're talking about here will allow sharing of information as approved by individual patients slash clients with entities outside of Placer County, if I'm reading this correctly, so like Kaiser Additional Hospitals. Am I reading that correctly?
Right.
That's great, because I, you know, there's always the concern that we come up with something and we're very siloed, and there's no ability to share that with other entities as necessary. So, that was, that was something that really pleased me to see in there. In terms of the fiscal impact, it says the county general fund portion will be offset by savings as a result of decreased accounting and clerical requirements, which I don't doubt at all. But do we have any sort of timeframe associated with that? How long will it take to recoup that?
It'll probably in a year to year and a half. The first year of the implementation year, there's actually some decrease in productivity because you're implementing a system while you're trying to do business the old way. But once that's overcome, we expect that, you know, billing and scheduling and lots of things that are currently done by staff will be, won't be as needed by staff, staff costs won't be as high to do those purposes because the software will handle it.
Great. So, about a year, two year and a half, it sounds like, to recoup those costs. That's terrific. That's a really short timeframe, so thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval?
Moved and seconded to approve the just discussed contract with the Oregon Community Health Information Network. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is the Children's System of Care, approved contracts to conduct community grant-making activities. Dr. King?
Good morning, Chairman Wygant, members of the board. I'm Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. The System of Care in Placer County continues to creatively utilize state mental health funds to build upon the county's nationally-known Blended Services model in order to develop services through a shared partnership with community nonprofits and private sector partners. A coalition of community agencies, including the County Office of Education, representation from many community nonprofit organizations, and the probation department, has identified a community grant-making process as the best way to further deepen, expand the consumer and family-driven service model in Placer. Placer Community Foundation and Truckee Tahoe Community Foundation have many years of experience helping Placer's community agencies grow and develop. PCF, with your approval, will administer $355,174, while Truckee Tahoe will administer These grants provides, these contracts, rather, will provide small grants of up to $10,000 to grassroots and other community organizations that have existing support relationships with vulnerable county residents who struggle with their mental wellness. This funding will give birth to new innovative practices within the community partnership and will enhance the existing service methods utilized by our faith-based and other community-driven partners for more than 2,500 residents over the next 18 months. The total expenditures of $507,392 include, again, 100% state funds, and are contained approximately one half in this year's current budget and the remaining half in the 11-12 pending budget. We recommend your approval.
Any questions from the board? Anyone from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, what's the...
Move approval?
Moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation regarding the contracts to community service grants. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We will now turn to closed session. Tony?
The board will go into closed session and take up the items on page two, item six, two, existing litigation matters. Be back at 10 o'clock. Be back at 10 o'clock.
Okay. The board has just returned from closed session and Tony, would you report out, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board did take up the matters on page two, item six, two existing litigation matters. In both cases, the board received an update in status from council and gave direction. That closes this report.
Thank you. We'll now move to our 10 o'clock timed item, regional sewer plans. We're going to receive an update, update on the status of SFD one reconstruction plan and regional sewer proposal. So Jim, you going to kick that off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Durfee with Facility Services and I have Will Dickinson, Deputy Director, responsible for environmental engineering with me and also a number of staff and consultants. We also have representatives from the city of Lincoln and what we wanted to do, as you said, Mr. Chairman, was update the board on the ongoing efforts to bring Sewer Maintenance District Number One's treatment plant into compliance or to provide a compliance options to the board for that district. So you're going to receive an update on the design work that's been underway for an actual upgrade and expansion of that treatment plant from county staff. Will's going to be taking the lead on that. But also, as your board is aware, we've been here numerous times over the last several years on this and several times this year, we're working on a parallel track to continue to explore the option for regionalization of our wastewater. I'm not going to go into the background of that because I think the people in the room are all acutely aware of how that has transpired over the years. But as recently as this last autumn, your board has authorized the city of Lincoln and actually provided some funding to the city for the city to prepare a proposal for them to construct, own and operate a lift station and pipeline that would handle flows from SMD one and transport that water to Lincoln for treatment. And after we've updated you on our upgrade project, Bruce Burnworth and some other representatives from the city of Lincoln are here to provide you with an update on the city's progress in preparing that proposal for that proposal for you. So with that brief background, I would like to turn the podium over to Will Dickinson to provide you with an update. We have a lot of staff here that's available to answer questions, so please feel free at any time to interrupt us and ask whatever level of questions you'd like.
Thank you, Jim. Jim just covered slides one through seven of my presentation. He talked about the meeting purpose. History, Jim touched on a little bit. SMD one was formed in the 1960s to serve the North Auburn area. A lot of our facilities were constructed under grant programs available at that time. SMD one serves approximately 5,300 residential EDUs and 2,500 native commercial and industrial EDUs. Although this is one of our two largest districts, it's really very small in comparison to, say, the City of Roseville or anything in Sacramento County. Makes it challenging to fund this district. Better than some of them, but not as good as others. SMD one is funded through fees collected from customers. Occasionally, we get grants for specific projects and we do not receive any general fund support. This is a map of the district. It's basically a C shape. Most of our customers are located in the lower part of the sea, Auburn Beaumont area, and very little development as of yet up in the upper part of the sea. Plant one's wastewater treatment plant is located on Jirga Road. It was constructed in 1961. It's now about 50 years old. We did do some upgrades over the years, most recently in 1995, about a $2 million project, and in 2000, roughly 2000, about a $4.2 million project. Significant upgrades are now required to meet new regulatory standards. We did receive a permit in 2005 that was very significantly more stringent than previous permits. It required new treatment processes to meet new regulatory standards. Compliance deadline in that permit was June 2010. That was to get one of our two compliance projects done. We did not meet that deadline. As a result, we're now incurring fines of approximately $15,000 per month. We have been pursuing two options, as Jim mentioned, in parallel. Option one is to upgrade and expand our existing treatment plant. Option two is to regionalize by building pump station pipeline to Lincoln and to expand the Lincoln plant to handle SMD one flows. Either one of these options would increase our capacity and utilize modern treatment processes that meet regulatory requirements. We did get a new permit this last September. This permit is predicated on the concept that we're moving forward with the upgrade project. It does require us to have a design by July 31. We are required to make progress reports on funding of the regional project because we mentioned that your Board wanted us to continue looking at that and see if there was any more federal funding out there that might make this project more affordable. It does have discharge standards similar to what the Lincoln plant is required to meet and the new upgrade project would be designed to meet these standards. Currently, well, recent history is your Board authorized the pre-design of this upgrade project back in March 2009. Somas is the company that did that work. Your Board authorized final design in May 2010. We are now nearing completion of the 90% construction drawings and bid documents are scheduled for June 2011. And the environmental review and the loan applications are in progress and on schedule and you may recall that we're looking for state revolving fund loans to finance this project. To summarize what this project will do, it provides an initial capacity of 2.7 million gallons per day. The site would be easily expandable to 4.2 MGD, which is our estimated build-out requirements. The estimated capital cost moving forward is $62 million for the 2.7 MGD plant. This compares to an earlier estimate of about $87 million, which is roughly a 29% decrease in the cost. Cost expended thus far is about, it's actually about 2.4 million. I totaled it up this morning. Construction would begin, could begin by December 2011 if your Board decides to move forward with this project and completion would be scheduled for December 2014. This is a overlay of, over our existing plant showing some diagrams of where new treatment processes would be placed. The main thing to know here is that we are going to have to put the new treatment processes in while we're running the current plant and so those will be going in not all at once, but over time. Somas has done a similar project to this in Eldorado County and was very successful at that, so we're confident that they can do it for this project. The current status of the regional project is that we, that PNWA TAC put together some planning level cost estimates in April 2008. Those showed that the capital and lifecycle costs of the regional project were significantly higher than the upgrade project. The cost for the county only associated with that project was about, at that point in time, was about $140 million. The PNWA TAC took another look at those planning level estimates because there's been a huge change in the construction environment and came, got that cost down to $97 million for county only option. That's about a 31% drop, so it's real similar to the drop that we saw for the upgrade project. City of Lincoln has, over the last few months, been developing a new proposal for the regional project. It's somewhat different. It includes some new assumptions about project design and capacity and Bruce Burnworth is here to explain that more fully to you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to Jim for moving on to the next topic.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The upgrade for the SMD one plant is designed for 2.7 million gallons a day?
Correct.
Where did that number come? How was that number determined?
It's, it's looking at the processes that are required to meet our needs for the next 15, 20 years. There are certain sizes to clarifiers and other aspects of the treatment processes that fit together nicely at that level. We looked at smaller sizes. We looked at a 2.1 and it just doesn't provide us the redundancy and the other backup capabilities that we would like to have, so.
So do you think it'd be feasible to go to the 2.1 and later on expand to the 2.7? Does that make any economic difference?
It's feasible. It's not as, the cost per gallon for construction is going to be more expensive. It wouldn't give us as much redundancy and flexibility at the plant for treating waste, so it's not currently what we would recommend to the Board.
If we did go that route, that would, we wouldn't necessarily have to raise the rates, though.
We need to evaluate the rates a little more fully. It's possible that we wouldn't need to raise rates, but it's probably, more probable that we would have to raise them somewhat, but what that number would be, next time I come in front of you, I will have that answer for you.
If I could interject just a little bit, I think that to build a smaller project certainly is, is one of the things that we could talk about. As Will said, it's not as cost-effective on a per gallon basis. It doesn't provide some of the redundancy and other, other aspects. And the additional cost between, say, a 2.1 MGD project and a 2.7 MGD project would, would be primarily borne by future development. And as a matter of fact, it's a cost-effective way to do that. It would help keep our connection fee lower to build that extra capacity now as part of a larger project. So what we really did was tried to come up with, what the engineers were tasked with, was to come up with the project that made the most sense, both economically and logistically on the site and with the constraints that are going to be encountered as they, as they construct on that site. And that's how the 2.7 size came about and it would, it would overall be the most cost-effective approach on that site right now. Although, a smaller project would be lower capital, capital dollars. You might not see a linear reduction in the cost to our current customers because of that.
But the additional cost would be borne by connection fees?
That's correct.
And then who did our analysis as far as the estimate?
On the financial side?
Yeah.
Kathy Domenico of Capital Public Finance Group. She's here today if you want to ask her any further questions.
And the actual cost estimates are put together as part of the design process by Somas.
Okay.
Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Will. I wanted to make sure I got some of the numbers that you went through fairly quickly down correctly. If I heard you correctly, you said that in 2008, it was estimated the upgrade would be 89 million and today we're looking at 62?
I think it was 87 if I might recollect.
Seven, okay. And that, that was a decrease, you said, of about 39%?
About 29%.
29%, okay. So I knew I didn't get those numbers correct. And then on the regional, 2008 estimate was 140 million?
That, yes, for the county only option.
Portion only, right. No, I understood that. And then our estimate today?
The most recent TAC estimate from November was 97 million and that's for a similar apples-to-apples project.
Okay, and, and that was about a 31% decrease?
Correct.
Okay. Following up on Jim's question about the possibility of starting with 2.1, moving to 2.7, and then at some point moving to 4.2, just so I understand, 2.1 currently is the absolute minimum needs for the plant. That's what we're bumping up against right now? Is that correct?
Where our average dry weather flow ranges between 1.5 and 1.9 million gallons per day, so that would be, you wouldn't want to go under 1.9 for sure. If you want to have any capacity for taking on new connections, it would be a good idea to go minimal to 2.1. If you, we believe the 2.7, as Jim mentioned, is, is more cost-effective.
But you said dry weather. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't account for the huge I and I problems that can occur when we have very rainy weather, correct?
They, when they're designed for a dry weather flow, there's a certain amount over that that is built into the system for wet weather flow also.
Okay. And then the 4.2 down the line in the future, that's to allow for existing zoning development out in the SMD one area, is that correct? That doesn't, that's not looking at changing zoning and bringing a lot of new development into the area, but only what's there today?
I would, I think that's generally correct. I would say general plan. It's consistent with the general plan, maybe not current zoning, though.
Okay, thank you.
Jack?
Yes, thank you again. I just wanted to focus on the design aspect of, of the existing project and you stated that it's at 90% right now. Now, is that 90%, is that at the 2.7 or at the 2.1, or does it encompass the ability to build out the 2.7?
The design is for a 2.7 MGD plant. If we wanted to go to a 2.1, it would take a number of months for us to switch gears and get those designed to the level that it's at today.
And do you have any, if, if there was a decision made to go to 2.1, do you have any estimates as to what that would cost over and above the 2.4 that's already been expended on the 90%?
I believe I heard a figure of 6 million. I'm sorry, that's not correct. How much would it be?
It'd be an additional million in design costs and nine months in terms of schedule.
Okay. I'm sorry, additional $1 million in design costs, if we can't beat Webb down a little bit from that number. But the, the main advantage, as I see it, to go into 2.1 would be if we have difficulty financing a 2.7 MGD plant. If we can build a 2.7 MGD and finance it the way we think we can, there's really no advantage to going down to a 2.1.
And also, is, would there be any additional expense on upgrading or updating environmental documents related to a redesign at 2.1?
Probably yes. Probably not the same kind of magnitude, you know, as a rough guess, 30 to $50,000 more. But generally speaking, I would expect that our, our environmental review is, is covering worst-case scenarios, so those probably are already covered. Going down to 2.1 would probably be very little extra work for the environmental consultant.
Okay. And last question. What would the contribution be going to the regional plan?
The, I think that's a good question for Bruce. I think he's better fixed to answer that right now than I am. We've, we got their proposal a week ago. We've been working with them on it all along, but the final version a week ago, so he'd be better equipped to answer that.
And then Will, or someone, could you talk a little bit for me, describe, this is a pretty massive reconstruction or close there to of SMD one and we have to operate it with certain standards while we're doing all of that. And I know that's been an issue of some degree and I think you're pretty comfortable with it, but could you give me some more information about that?
Actually, Webb Owen might be the best person to talk about that since he's actually experienced it at the Deer Creek plant.
Good morning. I'm Webb Owen with Somas and my understanding of your question is with respect to keeping the existing plant operating while the new plant expansion and upgrade is being built, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. It would be very much like we did with the City of Placerville and with the drawings, I could show you a lot of detail, but basically, we have laid the plant out such that a, the major liquid process train could be built, keeping the existing liquid process train online and operational. And that one very important milestone would be to put the new liquid process train online that would then allow us to take pieces of the existing plant off and replace or renovate them because some of them are being reused and some of them are being removed. And some of the new pieces, primary clarifiers, we would be able to build one of them and operate with one at the outset and then the second one would be built after the basins that are in the way were removed. And so we've got that all laid out on the overall plan and, and that's why this construction schedule is as long as it is because it needs to be done in a manner that, that maintains the permit requirements on the existing plant as much as that plant can meet them, which it doesn't. That's why you're paying fines.
And you had success with that in Placerville?
Very much so. If you have any questions, the city manager and those people can answer those questions for you, I guess. It's very successful.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? I don't see any, so.
At this point, I think it'd be appropriate to turn the podium over to Bruce Burnworth with the City of Lincoln and I know he's got some other folks with him to provide you with an update on the work that they've been doing towards bringing a proposal to the Board.
Thanks. And I think Spencer is going to approach us first.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Good morning, Spencer.
I'd like to give you four numbers to think about. 16, 200, 92, and 50. I'll come back to each of these numbers. Today, what we're talking about is actually a unique project that will help us generate clean water throughout Placer County, develop reliable long-term permitting and disposal of wastewater. Okay, that's really what we're, we're here talking about today. You know, over the last 16 years, there's been significant staff investment in the PNWA. We've worked very hard together as a team. However, it's taken us 16 years to get here, which I think we'd hope might be a little sooner, but I think that's also because we've changed our dynamic. We've changed the way we're looking at this. In fact, in the last few months, we have decided to go ahead and take the bull by the horns and say, you know what, let us generate a cost proposal. $200 million is the original cost of this project. I think we can all agree, that's kind of crazy because it, we generate something that is completely unworkable for, for you, the Board, for your constituents, for the ratepayers. Over the last several months, we've been able to whittle that $200 million down to $92 million. Bruce will talk about, more about the actual cost proposal itself. But what we have is we have a chance to work together, combine our efforts, develop a better economy of scale, develop lower rates for treatment of wastewater, disposal of wastewater, and again, make this regional effort that we worked, we started working on 16 years ago, work for us for the next 50 years. years ago, work for us for the next fifty years. For those of you who haven't traveled down to the Lincoln wastewater plant, it is really a work of art. It's something that is unique. It's, it's one of the few plants that actually meets all the requirements currently in the state of California. And not only that, but we have the ability to expand. You know, you heard Will say earlier that your current plant is looking at about two-point-seven MGD, maybe four-point-one on the outside. Our plant has the ability to sustain that and more. At the same time, we have the ability to clean up water courses. We've, we've worked with Plaister County and the city of Auburn on this proposal to take wastewater plants that are, you know, not meaning to cast any judgment, but, but they are inferior plants to the plant that we would be treat, that we'd be traveling to to treat. Nice thing is, I think we all know how wastewater flows. It all flows downhill, and so, we're downhill from you. I think this is a project that has some really unique features that will allow us to better serve our entire constituency, not just the constituency of SMD-one or the city of Auburn. But it generates benefits for both those entities, and even generates some benefits for the city of Lincoln if we're able to bring this wastewater down and to develop a true economy of scale, thereby lowering everyone's rates equivalently. There will be some, some issues, I'm sure, that will come up, but I'd like to introduce Bruce Burnworth, who's worked on this proposal. And I'd like to reserve a couple minutes at the end, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yeah, thank you, Spencer. I should have said this earlier, but anyone from the public could like to have a chance for comments or questions. We're definitely going to entertain that before we finish this up, so I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Bruce? Nope, that didn't work. Another one? Nope. Nope. That's not the next one.
By the way, that ends going to be particularly fun if you have nothing scheduled for the rest of your morning, and here we go.
Here we go, okay, good. Thank you, and we're here to talk about the, the work that we've done on this project. We view this as working together with Auburn and the county to make this project happen and to benefit the entire region. Let's see, there we go. As Spencer said, we've talked about this project for a long time. It includes conveyance from SMD number one and from Auburn down to Lincoln for treatment. It also includes beneficial use of the treated effluent for agricultural purposes, and is, it is widely recognized as the best solution, as long as the costs are affordable. I think you're probably pretty familiar with the map of, associated with the project. Let's see, I can use a pointer. So, up here at the top, we have the Auburn, or the SMD number one wastewater treatment plant. The regional project would put that flow reaching that plant into a pump station and a pipe would carry that flow down along this little general alignment down to a junction point, at which point, the pipeline would be joined with the wastewater from the Auburn wastewater treatment plant. And then, have a joint section of pipeline coming down to Sierra College Boulevard. From Sierra College Boulevard, there was a pipeline installed by Bigford Ranch, almost completely installed by Bigford Ranch. There's about three thousand feet that still needs to be installed. From there, the flow would go through that pipeline and then reach existing city of Lincoln pipelines that were built over the last ten years to carry the flow all the way to the Lincoln wastewater treatment plant, where it would be treated and then disposed of from an agriculture, for agricultural use. This project, it benefits all agencies. We, we've worked hard to make sure that it doesn't just benefit any one agency, but it benefits all agencies, provides compliance with new regulations at the least amount of cost. A large facility, such as the city of Lincoln's, that's spread out, has lots of space to expand and to accommodate new facilities to meet new regulations, can be done most cost-effectively with the plant. The O and M costs, by combining all the flow into one treatment plant, are less. Lots of economies of scale associated with that. We have reduced environmental footprint associated with the treatment and disposal, again, all being in one location. There's a clear path forward for future expansion to meet community needs in Auburn, the county end, and Lincoln as well. And then, there's a beneficial use of the capacity that Lincoln has already built into the Lincoln sewer lines and treatment plant. Background on this, just a little bit more recent background. In November, the city council in Lincoln approved a cooperative agreement. That cooperative agreement was then approved by the Board of Supervisors in December, and the Auburn City Council in January, which provides for the city of Lincoln to do the work necessary to come up with a firm price proposal. And in that, the city of Lincoln committed to provide a firm price proposal in February, and that is what we are doing tonight at the city council meeting. The city council of Lincoln will be considering that firm price proposal, so we'll be able to formally make that proposal to the county as well as the city of Auburn. And as Spencer said, one of the unique things about this approach is that it's one agency taking the lead in design and construction and operation of the plant, which makes it more, more cost-effective and more efficient. And as I think everybody's been talking about, we've been meeting weekly over the last three months with county staff and Auburn staff to come up with a, a project that works the best as possible for everybody. There's also a thorough and exhaustive project analysis that's been done. Some of this has been done over the last years, and a lot of it's been done over the last three months, looking at the project and analyzing. There's been a lot of analysis associated with the, the project and how to contain the costs and make it as cost-effective for everybody. Some of the key elements, the three key elements associated with the project is that with this proposal, Lincoln would proceed with the environmental review and design of the project with funding from Auburn and the county. There would be a firm price proposal for the construction in the first five years of operation. And the third feature is, after that five years, the O and M costs, the operations and maintenance costs associated with the treatment plant would be split among all the participants in accordance with the biological load and the flow. So, there's a benefit to all agencies from, from the cost savings associated with economies of scale, and those savings would be shared with all agencies. Cost history, Spencer talked a little bit about this. The project has changed over time. It's still accomplishing the same regional goal of bringing all the sewage from Auburn and from the county down to Lincoln for treatment, but the way it's being done is different than it was in the past. Two-hundred million dollar cost has been reduced down to a hundred and forty million dollars, and these costs are for Auburn and the county, or some of the costs that were talked about earlier for, for, just for the county portion. And now, we're looking at a ninety-two million dollar cost for these facilities. That's a forty-eight million dollar cost reduction, and most of that cost reduction has resulted from a thorough investigation and analysis of the various aspects of the project, and I'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide. Lincoln is able and we're motivated to reduce the long-term cost of the regional project. Those benefits, as we talked about earlier, benefit the city of Lincoln, also benefit the county and Auburn as well. I'd like to just talk about a few of the items that we analyzed in this last three months. One of them, we have confirmed that there's less hard rock along the alignments. Previously, was assumed there's a certain level of hard rock. We've confirmed that there's, there are less hard rock than we anticipated. We still don't know exactly how much hard rock is. We won't know that until we actually dig the pipeline trench and, and complete the work, but we are confident that there, there is less. Storage and pumping approach has been tailored to meet the, the needs specific to each location. For example, at the city of Auburn, they have large, large ponds currently that can be used to store water, to even out the flows during the wintertime especially. At SMD number one, we don't have those existing ponds, so what we're proposing there is to just have a pump station that pumps all the flow through the pipeline down to the city of Lincoln. We've been able to reduce the size of the pipes and have shallower depths to save costs because of the further analysis that's been done. We've been able to eliminate some of the complicated valving that we had previously. We've confirmed the agricultural land is available for disposal of the water, whereas before, we had more storage associated with the effluent, treated effluent. We've also confirmed lower bid pricing in today's market by talking with a number of contractors and getting prices actually from those contractors. And we're also looking at design build in order to control costs and eliminate, or reduce the risks associated with the project. So, the firm price proposal. We've committed to providing the firm price proposal in February, and we're, we're doing that. These costs are with Auburn participating in the project. The costs would be somewhat different if Auburn is not participating in the project. So, we're looking at about four-point-eight million dollars of environmental review and design, which would be spread over eleven months of payments. That would be the agreement now. And we have two parts of the agreement because of the need to comply with CEQA. Initially, we were thinking of just having a firm price proposal that would cover the entire project. However, CEQA doesn't allow us to do that. We have to go through the CEQA process, and everybody has to adopt CEQA findings and, and deal with that prior to making a commitment to the project. So, we're doing the environmental review and the design in the first agreement. The second agreement, which would follow completion of the environmental review, would be a firm price for the construction and operation of the plant. And we're looking at sixty-four-point-five million dollars for the county's share of the project, and twenty-two dollars a month for pre-EDU for O and M for the first five Got some opportunities associated with this project that some people view as constraints or pushing things. I like to look at them as opportunities. And one of the, the main opportunities is that SMD number one plant, we understood it was going to be bid in, in June, in May. Now, it sounds like it's going to be bid in June. That creates a very short window of opportunity for the county to consider a regional project, and we're trying to meet that short window and provide the information that the county needs in order to make a decision about whether or not to proceed with a regional project or expansion of the SMD number one treatment plant. Another window of opportunity is the current bidding environment. Over time, that window is going to decrease. We don't know how fast, we don't know how long, but this is the best bidding environment that we've seen in a long time. And another thing is that the city of Lincoln, this is kind of a long-term opportunity, but the city of Lincoln has expanded the regional pipeline through, the pipeline through Lincoln and the treatment plant to accommodate the regional facilities, and that creates an opportunity for the regional project that would not exist if we had not done that over the last ten years. The basis of the firm prices, in order to make an offer, a firm price offer for this project, we need to have a schedule. So, we put together a schedule that then becomes the basis for those prices. We're looking at environmental review and design proposal being accepted in March thirty-first of this year, completion of the environmental review in March two thousand twelve, construction and operation agreements then being signed in April of two thousand twelve, with the construction of the conveyance facilities starting in two thousand twelve and being completed in two thousand thirteen. And with this, if there are delays to these agreements, the result is that costs will increase, because that's what is currently happening, and costs are increasing over There are risks associated with this project, as with any project, whether it's small or large, regional or local, there are risks associated with any project that costs will not be exactly as they were originally budgeted. Lincoln is willing to assume these risks for the first five years of, of the operation as well as for the construction. We're willing to make a firm price offer to complete the project, which is quite unusual. And the reason we're able to do that is because of the investment that we've made in these facilities and the opportunity to have a return on that investment if this project is successful. So, the city of Lincoln is, is willing to do that, which is, I think is very unusual and provides a good opportunity for the county as well as Auburn. There are limits to the risks that the city of Lincoln is willing to accept. If, for example, the capital costs exceed the budget more than the Lincoln oversizing reimbursement, then Lincoln would receive no reimbursement for this oversizing, and the county and Auburn would receive the oversizing benefit at no cost to the county or to Auburn. And then, after that contingency has been exhausted, and as I said, Lincoln is not receiving any return on its investment, then the county and Auburn would share in the cost increases. That is a very, very unlikely event. It is possible, anything's possible, but it's a very unlikely event. We'll be working hard to avoid that, obviously, because the city of Lincoln wants to get a return on its investment. The operation, operations cost increases over time would be adjusted per economic indices. For example, power, if the unit price for power goes up, then the power cost in the proposal would go up as well. Those are pretty standard adjustments. We're trying to tailor those indices to exactly how the, the operations may be affected. And as I said earlier, after five years, the treatment plant O and M costs would be divided among the participants based on the biological load and the flow, so everybody is looking equally at the costs. And Lincoln is definitely motivated in controlling long-term costs, as we have in the past. We have one of the lowest wastewater rates in the, in the area, as well as having one of the best treatment processes in the, in the area. The next steps, this is just a kind of a recap. We're going, first of all, we've had a lot of discussions with county staff and with Auburn, and we'll continue those. We anticipate over the next couple of months of continuing to have these discussions, and if the project moves forward, then we'd continue these discussions over the duration of the project and resolve any issues that need to be resolved and, and work together, continue to continue to work together. So, tonight, the city council, as I said, is going to consider approval of the regional project proposal to county and Auburn. Then, that'll be transmitted to the county. We'd request that the Board of Supervisors consider that proposal on February twenty-second. We can, we'd request that Auburn City Council consider that proposal on February twenty-eighth. And then, if that proposal's accepted, or with some modifications as appropriate, Lincoln would proceed with the environmental review and design, proceed then with construct, with, after environmental review is done, we can proceed with the construction and operation and looking at having the pipeline facilities online in July of two thousand thirteen with the treatment facilities completed in July of two thousand fifteen. It's a very aggressive schedule. We're very confident with the analysis that's been done over the last three months that it can be accomplished, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Burnworth. There's one thing missing that I haven't seen in your presentation is the governance. How is this regional plan going to be governed?
I can talk a little bit about that, and then Spencer may have some additional words on it. What we're proposing at this point in time is to have an oversight committee. And that oversight committee would have two levels. One would be a technical advisory level, and the other would be an elected official level. We would be bringing to that committee the design, during the design process, we'd be bringing to them the design documents, showing them that, getting the technical input, and then also getting input from elected levels as far as that project goes. During the operation and maintenance of the pipeline, we'd be doing the same thing. We'd be bringing all the budgets to that group and providing information, answering questions, and receiving input, and, and then going forward from there.
But the oversight committee wouldn't be a decision-making body?
The way it's envisioned right now, the oversight committee would be making recommendations back to the various boards. So, it'd be making a recommendation back to the Board of Supervisors, be making recommendations back to the city council in Lincoln and city council in Auburn.
So, you don't envision a JPA would be up to each of the individual boards to go?
Yeah, let me talk a little bit about that. One of the things with this, with, with having one agency taking the lead in designing and building and operating the facilities, it is then something to look at in the future to form a JPA to operate it, is one agency is responsible for all those things, that those responsibilities can easily be then transferred to a JPA that would be responsible for it. At this time, we're not proposing that, but that is certainly something that's feasible in the future.
Okay, I would think it would be important to have some kind of governing board in place, or at least a system of governance before we proceed with either option. That's just my comments on that. Now, you mentioned about the egg water. Are you selling egg water now out of the Lincoln plant? Is that, the, the treated effluent, is that being sold to agricultural use, for agricultural use at this time?
We have some of the water that is actually going on to county land through an agreement with the county. That's being used productively. If there is some revenue coming from that, it's very small. We're anticipating that with the use of the reclaimed water for agricultural purposes, there will be some revenue coming in from that that will help to offset some of the costs associated with getting the water to them. It's not, it's not a revenue producer. It's, it's mainly something that will offset some of the costs associated with getting the wa, the treated water to that particular user. The main objective of it is to cost-effectively dispose of the water and have it beneficially used.
But you're going to have additional treated effluent coming into your system, and is, if you're, is that going to create a problem of releasing that? Are you going to have to pay to have that all the way, or?
Oh, that's one of the main differences that we had, one of the differences that we had between the cost proposal that was done last October and currently. We've now gone out and talked with property owners, farmers, they're willing and able and very interested- interested in accepting the water for their agricultural use. They're within a couple of miles of the treatment plant, so the cost line, the cost of the pipeline is very cost-effective. And those users are willing to use that water. So, we don't anticipate that being a problem. That's something that is available.
So, it'll be provided to them at no cost?
They will have a cost to it, but it'll be less than the cost of pumping the water out of the ground. It'll be less than other sources of water that they have.
Okay. And then, what's the build-out capacity for the Lincoln plant?
I don't know if we have a build-out capacity. Some of the features have been designed for...
What's the current capacity?
Oh, the current capacity is 4.2 MGD. And we're using...
2.8 MGD is your current use?
Yeah, we're using 2.8. So, we have about 1.4 MGD of capacity available right now.
And so, you would have to expand the capacity to accept the effluent from SMD one?
Correct. The proposal here is that we would expand the existing plant to meet the needs, the current needs of SMD number one and Auburn. And then, we'd remain, we'd have that 1.4 MGD of capacity to accommodate additional growth. We'd collect connection charges during that time period and be able to have the money then to build the expansion when it comes.
Okay. The environmental review is going to take about a year, the design and environmental review?
Correct.
Cost overruns, suppose we run into a mitigation problem with it during the environmental review, is that going to be borne by the $12 million buffer that you have in place?
Correct. Well, we're proposing, and the 62.5, $64.5 million, that includes the design cost and the environmental cost. There's a separate number upfront that needs to be paid in order to have that proceed. But the overall firm price that we're proposing includes all of that design and environmental review work.
But you do have a $12 million buffer in case?
Correct.
And will the, any additional mitigation from the environmental review be borne by that $12 million?
Yes. That's what we were proposing at this time.
And suppose there's any kind of legal lawsuit? There's a lot of litigation these days. Would that also be borne by the $12 million that you have set aside for cost overrun?
Correct.
So, that's, I know that's hard to figure out how much that is going to cost, and we know how much litigation is these days. But it seems to me that that's not a very high number. If there is problems with the hard rock, I know you said you, there's less hard rock than you, than it was previously supposed. But if we run into a problems, and when you exceed the $12 million of the buffer, where does that extra money come from?
If that, yeah. If that $12 million is exceeded, and as I said, we're going to be doing everything that within our abilities to limit that and to not have that occur, because then we won't get any investment back. But if it does happen, then the proposal is that if Auburn and the county are both participating, that Auburn and the county would share in costs above that amount.
And then, you mentioned in your, one of your key elements, the firm price for the first five years.
Correct.
What happens after five years?
After five years, we'll take the operations cost of the treatment plant, and those costs will be summarized, and then they'll be divided among the different agencies, Lincoln, county, and if Auburn is participating, Auburn, according to the biological load associated with each agency and associated with the flow. Those are the two main factors that affect the treatment costs. So, those costs would be split evenly among all the agencies according to those factors.
So, that comes back to my question about the governing board. If one of the government, one of the agencies decides not to proceed, does that not cause us a problem with the, with the regional project?
The cost proposal that we're going to be presenting includes options for the county and Auburn together. It also includes costs if the county alone is going forward with the project, and if Auburn alone is going forward with the project. So, we've covered all those costs, and those will be presented to the county and to Auburn.
Okay. That's all my questions for now.
If I might assist you a little bit, Supervisor Holmes, I know you asked about the cost for O&M. There's also the O&M of the pipeline.
Correct.
And it would not be an expectation the City of Lincoln would share in that cost, I would expect, except for that portion that might be connected in by City of Lincoln connectees, for example. So, that area that would be beyond would be the obligation of the county and the, in the City of Auburn, should they join in. Is that correct?
Right. And the concept there is that the pipeline that's in the City of Lincoln would be shared by City of Lincoln and Auburn and the county. And the pipeline that's outside of the city would be maintained by the county and Auburn. Costs after five years would be borne by those agencies. And that's what, something where the technical advisory committee and the oversight committee would definitely have a say in, you know, how those are being maintained, what costs are being, you know, collected for future replacements. That oversight committee and the technical advisory committee would have a very strong role in that.
But isn't the cost estimate, I remember from our meeting last week, that it's envisioned in the first five years, there would not be replacement costs for the valve systems, for the things that would maybe ordinarily be incorporated into an O&M cost for replacement costs of that pipeline for the first five years to keep that cost low for the maintenance of that pipeline. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's very common when you have new facilities to not start setting aside money for replacement until sometime after that first period of time. And so, what we're saying here is that during the first five years, we'd not be collecting money for that replacement. Pipeline, you know, replacement costs, you know, pipelines can last, they're designed to last 50 years, but often they'll last a lot longer than that. There will be components like the pumps and different valves that will need to be replaced before that. We don't see it as an issue of waiting until after the first five years in order to start collecting those fees, but we are not.
I was just trying to make sure the supervisor's question relative to the O&M, which would be split amongst everybody on the plant, would be different than the O&M on the pipeline. And there's potentially some deferred cost beyond the five years to keep the first cost of the five years down.
Yeah. I would probably not refer to them as deferred, because it's not deferred maintenance. It's just looking way, way out in the future as to when these things need to be replaced, and we'll start collecting that money after the first five years.
Got it. Yeah. I just want to make sure that's...
Okay. Couple of questions of my own, I guess. Jennifer, you have some. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce, for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions. You used a phrase, a firm price proposal, and I'm sort of unclear what that actually encompasses. Where are you on your design process? I mean, we heard that the potential upgrade that we're talking about at SMD one is at 90% design.
Correct.
Where are you on yours?
We've done a lot of analysis associated with the project and are confident in the project as it's currently defined. The treatment plant is something that essentially what we've done in the last, let's see, six, seven years ago, we built the existing treatment plant. We have all the designs associated with each one of those structures. So, it's a matter of, we need another oxidation ditch. We have the oxidation ditch already designed. It's a matter of building another one. We have to upgrade some of the, update some of the features associated with it to meet current, you know, code requirements for steel splices and that type of thing, but it's fairly minor. We can do that rather quickly. The pipeline is something that can be designed fairly quickly as well. We have not, we do not have design documents associated with that. We anticipate being able to finish that up within the 12 months from now until March of 2012.
Okay. So, it sounds, if I understand what you just said, that this 64.5 million, which is this firm price proposal, is really essentially sort of an aspirational figure at this point, because you don't have the design?
I would, I would refer to it as something we have a high level of confidence in, and we're willing to make a commitment to provide that, those facilities at a firm price. I've, I've worked on a lot of projects, not exactly the same as this, but for example, one pipeline project that I worked on, it was 40 miles of pipeline. We designed the entire pipeline in four months, and went up to bid and built, and had it built and constructed within a year. So, it can be done. I've done it before, and we're confident we can accomplish it here.
And I understand that these things can be done quickly. My concern, and what I'm really trying to clarify here, is that work hasn't been done yet. So, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable, frankly, with this idea of this firm price proposal, because I'm not sure what it's based on. I mean, I understand that you've done similar things in the past, and I understand that you have costs associated with those similar things. And I understand that this process can move forward in a relatively quick fashion. But, you know, we're talking about $64.5 million with potentially another 12 on top of that. But I'm just not really seeing what that's based on. And you have that nice big document there, which I would have loved to have seen before today's meeting. I would certainly expect that the other members of this board would want to see that before any February 22nd meeting. So, that's just one question I have. I have to tell you, I live on Donner Summit. We have a ton of different pipelines going through up there, sewer, water, some that are associated with fuels, transportation over the summit. And there were a couple of things on your cost reduction slide that sort of caught my attention because of some piping problems we've had on the summit. Removal of complicated valves, don't know exactly what you mean, because I haven't seen the backup documentation on that, but that's a little concerning to me. Sometimes we design complicated valves because they're there for a purpose. And until I understand what was proposed and what potentially would be replacing those, I'm uncomfortable with that. Storage reductions, I'm particularly uncomfortable with. I want to make sure that whatever is designed is designed to, you know, the worst possible scenario, the 100-year flooding with INI everywhere, and everybody flushing their toilet at the same time and having a shower. I just really want to make, you know, certain that that's been included in the analysis, when the analysis really does happen. And at the moment, I'm just not comfortable with that. In terms of the proposal to potentially place pipes on a more shallow placement, we've had some really disastrous problems with that on Donner Summit. And I would want to look very, very closely at the basis for that before moving forward on that. And then again, on the February 22nd date up there, Board of Supervisors requested to consider Lincoln proposal. What do you mean by that? What would your, what would be your expectation of that meeting?
When we're looking at this proposal, it's a proposal made by the City of Lincoln, and we anticipate that, you know, the county will be receiving it. They have, we see a kind of a range of options. One option would be that the county could just say, "Yeah, we like this. We're willing to accept it." Other option would be the county would say, "Well, we'd like to consider this further, and we want to work with you on adjusting to the agreement in such and such a manner, and we'll work..." The City of Lincoln is committed to working with the county under that scenario. The county could come back and say, "No, we reject this proposal, and we'd want to proceed with another route." Those are kind of the range of options. So, we're looking at, you know, getting some input back from the county in that regard.
Okay. And then, I think your, your schedule there is very ambitious, very ambitious, particularly the environmental review and design piece of it. And my concern, as someone who represents a huge number of people in the SMD one area, is if we decide to go down this path, what does that do to the upgrade project that we do have at 90% design, and we are moving forward on? Does that put it on hold? What if this then gets hung up? What happens with our fines from, from the various water agencies? That's, that's a very, very serious consideration for me. So, I would love to see what's in that binder and spend some quality time with it before I could really even consider the Lincoln proposal.
Yeah. We're continuing to meet with the county. The county has a copy of this binder. We'll be meeting with them actually this afternoon and answering some of their questions about the, what's in the binder. So, we're eager to share that information and to answer any questions you might have.
Jim?
Thank you. I've received a lot of comments from throughout the community, elected officials and otherwise, that claim that our county staff's proposal for going regional is way too high, and that our estimate for staying upgrading the local plant is way too low. Do you have any comments on that? Is there any justification for that?
Main thing I can comment on is the work that we've done on our project and our proposal. We were confident that the prices that we have, after doing a lot of analysis and investigation into it, are good, firm prices. And they're quite a bit lower than the prices probably that the people you're talking to were referring to earlier. They've come down, you know, 40-something million dollars from what they were, you know, three or four months ago. So, I think what we have now in this proposal is a very good, firm price for doing the work, and it represents the cost of actually implementing the regional project.
Chuck?
Just a quick question on that last piece that you were talking about with regards to the overall cost. Does those, do those assumptions include any type of escalation over the course of construction?
Yes, they do. I'm trying to remember. I think we had 2% in there for inflation over the, between now and when we'd actually be bidding the projects.
And is that, is that 2% a realistic, you know, my experience with the construction costs when things start to light up? Is that 2%? Is it?
As with any prediction as to what inflation costs will be in the future, there are risks associated with it. We anticipate, given the current economic situation, that that's a good number, and that the cost won't go up more than that in that year. If the economy all of a sudden lights up, which is, would be great for everybody, then the prices might go up more than that. No, we don't see that happening in the next two years.
Thank you. Sure. If I could, I just want to speak to the timeframes involved. I know that, appreciate the reaching out that the City of Lincoln has done to set up a series of meetings, and the PNWA, TAC folks in general, in terms of meeting, to go over the refined estimates and costs and the infamous binder that's been pointed out a couple of times here. I know in conversations with county council staff, too. That's a, I don't know how you'd ever get back in two weeks to have this completely reviewed, all the details wrapped up, not just on the technical aspects of how to do this project, should the board direct it to be done so, but also from the legal agreements that need to be done, to then transfer under agreement up to 4.6 or more million dollars to embark upon. This has to be done right. And getting that done, where we only have drafts now, in which we have to start publishing the board packet in about five days and doing it correctly, it's just unrealistic to expect that on your board's agenda for the next February meeting. Would, by most rational understandings of what needs to be done, you'd be looking, I think it'd be difficult, the first meeting in March, most likely the second meeting in March as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I wanted to make a couple of points of clarification, if I could. Bruce earlier had referenced irrigation on county property. That's, of course, not the county. It's the Western Plaster Waste Management Authority's property. City currently leases about 300 acres from the WPWMA specifically for the purpose of irrigation of treated effluent. And then, I wanted on record, I wanted to talk a little bit, just very briefly, about this difference in cost estimating. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison to compare the current proposal from the City of Lincoln to the previous concepts that were estimated by the PNWA, TAC, and county staff. The projects are very different. There's, there are significant differences in some of the engineering assumptions that go into those. So, it's just, I just caution you not to use an apples-to-apples comparison. For instance, in the last iteration of work that your board funded for us to value engineer that, we had actually changed assumptions on the regional pipeline from a dual pipeline system to a single pipeline system. One of the other changes that has come about from that exercise to this current proposal is that there was an assumption in the, in the previous work that we did, without diving off into too much technical jargon, but there was a, there was an assumption that we had a limitation on the amount of water that could be pumped into the pipeline on a current day, on a given day. There was a flow factor built onto that. That resulted in the need to construct storage capacity upstream to handle and what the parameter that we're using essentially is roughly a 10-year storm event. That assumption is changed in this proposal. Lincoln, Lincoln's proposal handles that water by pumping it all down the pipe in a day, rather than building construction. So, there are different parameters. There, it's all, you know, it's all good engineering work. I'm not, I'm not in any way criticizing either approach. I simply wanted to point out to you that there's, that the projects that have been estimated have evolved immensely over time, and there are significant engineering assumption differences. That's how these projects evolve. You know, you work through something, it doesn't work as well, you come up with a different idea, and that's simply the process that we're in right now. So, the difference in the numbers that have been put out over time represent different engineering assumptions, and then, and then different levels of risk assumption as well. So, just a little bit of clarification on the record for that. So, just a little bit of clarification on the record for that particular point.
Any other questions? First, Bruce, I'd like to thank you for the work that you've done. I think it's incredibly provocative for us to consider. We all probably should have done it about five years ago, and we probably all have been involved in this process, me included, sharing the blame of not having done more detailed work like this. But I really appreciate the level of effort that you undertook to get us here. And I want, I guess for me, as we move forward, I want to make sure that we have a good thorough understanding of those apples-to-apples comparisons and the relative strengths and weaknesses. And if there are some differences of opinion as it relates to better or worse engineering solutions, I want to hear that. I think we need to discuss that so that all of this can be thoroughly vetted. But one thing I want to emphasize, as I understand it, Bruce, the timeframe that the city proposed essentially is for two purposes. One, to accommodate desirable construction environment for less expensive costs. But then secondly, to comply with the county's pressure to meet new regulatory standards, correct?
Correct.
So, if there was a need to change that somewhat, but stay within those two envelopes, I'm assuming that the city would be agreeable to that.
Yeah, we're totally open to working on the schedule. I just wanted to make it clear that the costs that we're proposing in here are based on a certain schedule.
Right.
And if we can keep that schedule, we're committed to those costs. If the schedule for some reason, you know, slips a little bit in one way or another, then we'll have to revisit some of those costs in order to make sure that the costs are covered.
So, I think, the point I'd like to make is that if we go from February 22nd until March 8th, I don't hear it being the end of the world, and I don't think the city of Lincoln is going to withdraw its proposal, but I want to make sure that that's clear. On governing issue also, city of Auburn council hearing that I sat through, I heard that there was a flexibility by the city of Lincoln. What was being offered was simply something to clarify the offer and make it as simple conceptually as possible, but the city was not saying, "This is the offer we're making, and if you modify it at all, we're rejecting it." There's flexibility and the desire to develop something that's workable and functional.
Absolutely. There is, there is complete flexibility right now with respect to governance. We have kicked around a couple of ideas, and we'll keep on working through the ideas with our partners because the goal is to have a true partnership where everyone kind of lays their cards on the table, and we work from that. I think one of the key principles that I wanted to address here, governance structure, you know, realistically, we have five years where the city is going to be operating a big chunk of this, which would allow us to kind of fine-tune that governance structure as we discuss things. And, you know, it took PNWA several years before it was really fine-tuned. But I think the key principle that we're interested in here is non-interference. Our goal is to have all the partners participate equally, and if, one of the things that we've kicked around is if one partner feels a need to make an expansion to the plant for their needs, the other partners will not stand in the way so long as that partner is funding the improvement. So, I think that we have a kind of flexible governance system that will allow everyone to accomplish their own goals. So, if you guys decide to go up to 4.1 million gallons and you have the ability to fund that, then we would pretty much stand out of your way and allow that to happen. So, I hope that addresses part of the question.
And I know you want to have a little bit of time to make some other comments, Spencer, but another issue I'd like to throw out, I brought this up at the JPA meeting last time. I don't know exactly what the number is, Bruce, but I thought that the city's offer to use their oversizing cost was a provocative way to approach a contingency concern. I like that idea. I appreciate that the county has similar costs as it relates to Bickford oversizing requirements. I don't know what those are. And I'm assuming that the contingency reserve as is at $12 million is about 15% of the cost, which is 15%. I'll just leave it at that. If we wanted that to be bigger, if there was a perception that there was greater risk, I would like staffs to discuss the notion of bringing in the county's oversizing cost and maybe similarly and on a prorated basis, we could either enjoy the benefits and/or the risk of that, making that risk pot bigger if that's functional and possible in the next couple of weeks. So, for me, I'm just going to make a comment, then I'll finish, but in terms of my experience on this issue for about 15 years now, for better or worse. One, we have a lot of detailed experience working in South Plaster on a similar JPA. Generally, it's worked extraordinarily well, but we've got some really good suggestions as to how to make it better based on current frustrations that I'm personally feeling. So, I think we have a basis to build something that works and would be better. I'd like that to be taken into consideration. And then if there's somebody here today, I'd like to hear it, but I've not, after all these years, heard anybody say that a regional solution is not technically a better solution. That I've not heard anybody specifically who's in the business say that if you have a larger, more contemporary wastewater facility, it's not more likely that your compliance cost in the future will be less. The problem is, nobody knows exactly what that number is. But we have some good experiences on doing things like this collaboratively, like with our landfill joint powers agreement. And the alternative to that would be to have five individual small landfills, which I think just from a common sense perspective, doesn't make any sense. So, I want this consideration to be given really good thorough review as we move forward in the next few weeks. I appreciate, where we are, appreciate all the work that's been done. I know it's been challenging and difficult getting this much work done in such a quick period of time, and I want to hear an open and honest dialogue of any and all technical and other differences that may exist so that we can make an intelligent risk versus reward assessment. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Spencer, and I'll definitely give anybody else the opportunity to come forward and make some comments if they so choose or ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of comments I'd like to just add in. We've dealt with governance structure Mr. Holmes raised, and we'll continue to work on that through the PNWA. And you're, you know, Robert has been a great sounding board on issues there, and so we'll continue to work with him. Supervisor, if there's any chance that we could meet up and talk about this, be happy to talk to you about it further so we can refine our proposal. You know, the effluent disposal that was raised, what our goal is, is to use the effluent that's produced at the plant to offset rates. So, any effluent that's sent to a farm would basically be used because that's really a disposal product, and if we can get some money back for that, then we will use that to fulfill the repairs to the system and then to offset rates. Sequo. Sequo's a great question because I think a lot of folks run afraid of that one, as we all tend to do at times. But this project has some interesting limitations on the growth-inducing impacts, which is really the key issue that's raised in most Sequo lawsuits. The fact that we have a pressurized line means that there will be no connection through that section of force main. So, that limits where the growth inducement could occur. We've already analyzed it up to the Lincoln City limit boundary through our general plan, and that's, you know, what we've got on the shelf already. You have your general plan, so I think that that's a pretty clean issue. But that Sequo issue, Supervisor Holmes, could actually also impact your plant as well, since you haven't completed Sequo either. So, you know, I think that we're kind of running in parallel here, that we can both work together and make this thing work so that we're prepared for it. The firm price proposal, we're going to discuss this tonight, and it's my hope that the city council will provide a true offer. Okay? Now, a firm price, I've heard some people say fixed price. Fixed price is not an accurate term, but it's a firm price. We are willing to put up our $12 million in oversizing that we did based on representations of the county, and, you know, we stand ready to use that and to provide that to our partners. But again, we're willing to move this project forward because we see beyond the $12 million. You know, if we lose the $12 million, it's a shame, but I think we get a better regional product, a better regional effort. Supervisor Montgomery brought up the fact that our figures are kind of aspirational figures. Well, yeah, actually, I think everything that we're doing here is aspirational. We're aspiring to be able to solve permitting issues, and I think the permitting issues are really the thing that we need to stay focused on. You know, about 12, 14 years ago, we had a breakpoint where we could either build our own new wastewater treatment plant or try to refit a plant that actually is in many ways kind of similar to SMD-1, maybe even a lower tech level. And we opted not to do that because we saw that as economically unreasonable for us. And I think that that vision helped us achieve something that is unique in the region. We've been, forgive me, Gabe, how many years have we been a small plant of the year?
Three, I believe.
Three years in a row? Okay. And so, we have a history of operation that is impressive out there. As for the document, I think Bruce references, county staff has had this document for, I believe, a week and a half. Yeah, so, and Supervisor Montgomery, if you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to sit down with you and your staff, with my staff, and kind of walk through any issues that you may find in that. But the consideration of, on the 22nd, and, and forgive me, Executive Miller, you know, this is the first time we've heard that this timeline wouldn't be met because it's been talked about for, I think, two months now.
I expressed it to Bruce last week.
Okay. Well, and I mean, it's kind of, I'm just saying, you know, it's kind of jarring to hear that. So, but our goal is to keep on working with you. And in fact, if, you know, I think the real key is being able to have enough time and money to throw at this thing. And so, if we can help in any way, please let us know. But the consideration that we're looking for on the 22nd, or whenever that can happen, hopefully it's on the 8th, is really the offer that we'll put forward tonight. Okay? So, it is an offer. We're looking for an acceptance. Let's make a contract and let's move forward. Okay? We've waited for 16 years to get this thing moving, and so that's why we actually stepped up in this process. We've had extreme expenditures, you know, where we're not really reaping the full benefit, we're reaping a partial benefit, and we see this as a regional effort that is something that we need to do together. So, like has been said before, ambition is really the driver in this thing. Our ambition is to create a better Plaster County. We've worked with you guys on PCCP, on various JPAs, and we think that we can move forward with something that will make this region stand out. I think that is all of the questions I heard that I wasn't sure if we got full answers to. But Mr. Duffey's right. This is not an apples-to-apples comparison. This is a comparison of a project that is, that is at this point feasible to another project that is feasible, and hopefully we can come to some sort of solution that best benefits everyone in this county. So, with that, thank you all for your time this morning, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jennifer?
Yes, Mr. Short, I actually had a question. I just wanted a clarification. I wanted to make sure I heard what you said. I believe you said your expectation on February 26th is that you would be asking the Board of Supervisors to accept an offer as specified tonight?
Yes, that would be the goal.
Thank you.
So, you know their questions. Okay, thanks, Spencer. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to ask a question or make a couple of comments within three minutes? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
You'll have to bear with me. I'm not used to your procedures. I'm Pamela Creedon, and I'm the executive officer of the Central Valley Water Board, and we're the regulatory agency that has issued your wastewater treatment facility permit. And this project that you're discussing today is of keen interest to the board. We've been very supportive of regional solutions. In the Central Valley Water Board, we have over 55% of all the small disadvantaged communities within our regional board, and we are constantly having to address the issues of these small districts and small wastewater treatment plants and the cost of compliance to achieve the requirements that we set on them. And at every year, it seems like the requirements get more and more stringent. The actions of the board are becoming more dictated by both state and federal law. Many of our small communities are facing some enormous enforcement penalties against them for compliance, and they're struggling with the ability to pay, and the rates that they have to pay, the ratepayers have to pay are just really backbreaking for their community. And so, I can't emphasize enough the need to look at a regional solution so that the burden of the cost to comply can be shared over a larger rate base. We just got through issuing the SAC regional permit. They are a large regional plant. They serve over 1.3 million. We have significant challenges against their cost estimate of a $2 billion upgrade to their facility, but even in that case, even in the worst case that they propose, and tripling of the rates to their ratepayers, their ratepayers still will pay less than the communities, the smaller communities throughout our region to comply with our permit. Today, we're facing very stringent requirements. These will only go on. The California Toxic Rule imposed limits for priority pollutants, a list of priority pollutants that was established back in 1972. That was the beginning list, not the end list, and those requirements are always still under review. US EPA is always under review, those to see if those are the appropriate limits or if they need to be more stringent. We're also looking at constituents of emerging concern. These are your prescribed drugs and over-the-counter drugs and illegal drugs that are showing up in our waterways. They're constantly looking at this. We're being driven to do more. We are constantly being requested to start monitoring and regulating these. The state board is working on those right now to find what the appropriate monitoring program should be, but I can assure you, when we start monitoring, we will find them, and there will be constant pressure to deal with them. And right now, we know that some of the current technologies that are being used to address our current day standards will not address those constituents. So, you will be looking at future requirements that may require, may I have more time?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, that will require additional, most likely additional treatment. So, I just can't emphasize the need for our smaller communities to start looking to work together. Most of them want to. Most of them are concerned about the control, and those are doable, fixable problems with the appropriate, and you have lots of legal help to get you there, to start giving you that level of assurance on how it can be managed and governed properly so that your constituents are protected. But that seems to be the biggest holdup, is the control factor. And for our communities and for water quality and to assure our requirements can be met at the least cost, I think it's time to get past those burdens, that boundary, that wall of fear, and start working out these solutions because your communities are going to need it. We're not going to go backwards on the requirements. We're not, and it's strapping our ratepayers with the cost of compliance. And I'm just the messenger. I don't set all the laws, but once they're set, I have to enforce them, and I will. And so, that's my message for you today. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come up here today. Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Bob Snyder. I've been on the Auburn City Council, and I also served on the Regional Wastewater Authority for four years, and I thank you for this opportunity. Following along on Pamela's comments, most jurisdictions would love the opportunity to get out of the wastewater management business. I've watched the county fight to stay in for a long time, and it's remarkable because it takes a vision to see what's best for your ratepayers 50 years from now, not five years from now. You're going to be upgrading this plant. You've already upgraded it three or four times since it's been built. You're going to have to continue to do that in its own little footprint over and over again as time goes on with these new processes. That is kind of an outrageous position to be in and to be fighting to maintain. We all are interested at the lowest rates possible for our ratepayers. The regional solution will get you there. Without a doubt, it's the superior solution. I'd like to make sure that when you're comparing alternatives, that all the assumptions are the same. Is the financing assumptions the same? Are you trying to shift cost to future hookups for both alternatives? Those need to be considered. You need to account for the longer life of the regional system. They're not the same life. One of them has a much longer life, but you're going to finance it over a shorter period of time. You have to get your head around that. What does that mean? You have to include all costs and benefits. The future permitting costs I've already mentioned that are going to go up and up and up. The water generated, right now, it's proposed to be sold for agriculture water. It's Title 22 water and can be used as a substitute for real domestic water. You can irrigate master planned communities. You can irrigate master-planned communities. You can charge people full rate for that water. Right now, it has just a minute accountability in this cost comparison. It should be much larger. What is the real worth of that water in the next 50 years? Think about it. What is the real worth of that water? Future lawsuits, if you stay at home. The lost opportunity cost, you have some land tied up with this jogger plant that would be freed up for some other use. What's the value of that land? Has it been accounted for in these two alternatives? No, it has not. Because you have a natural bias to stay at home. Has this natural bias been accounted for in your thinking? And I'm talking about a subconscious natural bias. You've got plant workers out there that you want to protect. You don't want to go out of business naturally, okay? You have to work above that level and think through those kinds of things. And finally, I hate to do this with Pamela in the room, but what are you going to do about your adverse relationship with the State Water Quality Control Board when you stay at home, when you had an opportunity for a few million dollars more to have a regional system?
Anyone else like to address the board on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and report to staff for reporting back to us. Thanks. And maybe we should, you guys want to take a five-minute break?
Sure.
We'll take a five-minute break for our next item, which will...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you today is a proposed zoning text amendment for fowl and poultry in residential areas throughout the county. With me today are Dr. Mark Starr with the Health and Human Services Department and Josh Hudsonger, the County's Agricultural Commissioner. While the keeping of fowl and poultry are currently permitted within the residential agricultural farm and agricultural exclusive zoning districts, the residential single-family and residential multifamily zoning districts do not allow for the keeping of fowl and poultry. The raising of chickens in an urban environment is part of a growing movement of people who want to raise their own food for health and financial reasons, and there are many jurisdictions in California that currently allow for the keeping of chickens in residential areas. Locally, the cities of Auburn, Folsom, and Roseville have recently adopted ordinances that allow for the keeping of fowl and poultry within residential zoning districts. In response to inquiries from residents expressing a desire for a similar experience here in Placer County, staff has initiated this zoning text amendment to allow for the raising of fowl and poultry in residential zoning districts. It should be noted that because of existing rules and regulations that apply to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, this ordinance would not be applicable within the area governed by TRPA. The proposed zoning text amendment addresses the raising and keeping of chicken hens and does not include potentially nuisance or noise-producing fowl that include roosters, guinea hens, and peahens who are from the peacock family. The proposed zoning text amendment was presented to all MACs throughout the county, and comments and recommendations from the MACs have been incorporated into the proposed text that is before you. In addition, the zoning text amendment was presented to the Agricultural Commission and to the Planning Commission on two different occasions, both in a workshop setting and in a public hearing. During the workshop presentation, the Planning Commission provided the following recommendations to staff: eliminate the administrative review process and allow the keeping of chickens by right; establish a minimum lot size requirement of 5,000 square feet; increase the number of permitted chicken hens from three to six; and include the resort zoning district. These changes have been incorporated into the text that is before you today. During both the workshop and the public hearing before the Planning Commission, members of the public raised questions and concerns regarding animal welfare. Based upon input from the County Agricultural Commissioner and the Animal Services Division, the Planning Commission concluded that issues associated with animal welfare were already and adequately addressed, both in federal and state law as well as within Chapter 6 Animals of the Placer County Code. It was on this basis that the Planning Commission concluded there was no reason to repeat these code provisions within this proposed text amendment. After reviewing the text and receiving public comments, the Commission adopted a motion to recommend the proposed zoning text amendment to the Board of Supervisors. Subsequent to the Planning Commission's action, the staff received a letter from the Public Interest Coalition stating that the negative declaration was inadequate and that an environmental impact report should be prepared for the zoning text amendment. Issues that were raised by the Coalition included aesthetics, economic impacts on existing poultry producers, air quality and odor impacts, the creation of hazards and hazardous materials, impacts of hydrology and water quality, land use and planning conflicts, noise, and impacts to public services. While the Coalition did present several theories and opinions on what it believes are reasons for the Board to reject the negative declaration, staff concluded that the Coalition has provided no substantial evidence to support a fair argument that significant impacts may occur as a result of this proposed zoning text amendment. It was on this basis that staff has concluded the negative declaration is in fact accurate and correct in the appropriate document for your Board to take action on, and no revisions or additional analysis is warranted. Additionally, staff has concluded that the environmental issues that were addressed by the Planning Commission are adequate and do not need to be reconsidered by the Planning Commission. The staff report does provide detailed responses to each of the issues that was raised -- that were raised by the Coalition, and staff is here to respond to those should it be the desire of the Board. Staff does bring forward the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the negative declaration in the proposed zoning text amendment, and staff is available to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions at this time? Jack?
Yes, I have a question with regards to the negative declaration, and I'd like to direct you to Section 7, Hazards and Hazardous Materials, subsection Discussion Item 7.8. And I noticed that -- and this is actually Page 10 of 20, Number 21 of the Board Package. And in reading this, it looks like there was an evaluation done with regards to storage and disposal of feces and possible mismanagement. Was there any discussion with regards to the possibility of other species that would either predate on the fowl or use feed, storage, bedding, that kind of thing, that may have a -- that may pose a hazard, and I'm specifically talking about something like a hantavirus or something, an airborne virus like that? Was there discussions along those lines?
Yes, there has been discussions regarding those issues, and as with any animal, upkeep is of primary concern, and it is based upon that quality of upkeep that determines what impacts may or may not result. There's no reason to believe that the keeping of chickens will result in any hazards that had not been previously considered or that would be different from issues associated with the keeping of dogs and cats on your property. And so -- and Dr. Starr may want to talk about the hantavirus issue itself, but staff did not see that as an issue resulting from the zoning text amendment.
I'll just chime in, thanks. There's -- as far as hantavirus in particular, that's not one that we'd be concerned about with poultry rearing, and it -- I won't go through the whole life cycle here in the typical reservoirs, but it's not really a hazard that we're aware of with any rearing of poultry. And in fact, rearing poultry doesn't present any additional disease risk beyond what are there with rearing other animals. There's always some risk, and most of the concerns are with organisms such as salmonella, things like that, that you can get from, as you mentioned, feces, and that's true of a lot of species. So really, the guidelines, typical things, I always say our mother always told us, you know, is wash your hands and proper handling and care of animals and preparing food properly, things like that, would cover the risks that we're aware of.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to say initially that I think you've done a really good document here, great staff analysis. I've been very involved in this, so I don't have any clarifying questions at this point, but I will reserve my comments for after public comment.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I will open it up to the public for anyone who'd like to address the Board. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Marilyn Jasper, and I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition. We highly commend staff for the detailed responses in the staff report. That was very much appreciated. However, we disagree with staff's conclusion that preparation of this negative declaration is adequate in compliance with SEQA. It is not. Instead, we contend that the threshold for preparing an environmental impact report, an EIR, has indeed been met, especially with adverse impacts to wildlife due to the absence of hen enclosure requirements. Our comments plus opinions submitted by experts, which is allowed in SEQA, constitute a fair argument that this ZTA, quote, "may," unquote, have significant environmental impacts, which is SEQA's threshold for preparing an EIR. Even with no public input, the lead agency has an obligation to anticipate impacts and mitigate for them. Enclosure requirements adopted by other lead agencies plus common knowledge should be considered de facto evidence that allowing hens with no enclosure requirements will create significant impact -- negative impacts to wildlife. The SEQA threshold for preparing an EIR is that it only have the potential for adverse impacts, which this ZTA certainly has. To mention just two: enclosure requirements are based partially on the fact that chickens attract and are vulnerable to predators. Common sense dictates that this is -- that a no enclosure requirement may result in wildlife depredation. The NEGDEC ignores this impact with meaningless words such as "may encourage" enclosures. Second, raising chickens does attract rodents, which means poisons will be set out that may impact wildlife. Rodenticides have secondary impacts on wildlife, especially sensitive raptors, reptiles. The residual impacts of these new generations of poisons are now killing mammals as well. They are so strong. Yet, this ZTA summarily dismisses this impact by claiming owners will follow poison-handling directions on the label. The movement toward homegrown -- we support the homegrown, safe, organic, it's all very welcome and healthy. However, when potential problems are so obvious, why not mitigate properly now and avoid revisiting, revoking, or rewording another amendment? We urge you to not approve this ZTA and not adopt the NEGDEC. For the record, I'd like to submit additional comments and the evidence that I think will support that this may harm wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name's Sue Stack. I just want to make one additional comment about the proposed negative declaration, and I don't believe anybody else has said this. And that just has to do with the cumulative effect. I know that the document did not quantify how many parcels are subject to this change, and if you knew that and if you multiplied by six, I think it would be logical to analyze that as a potential cumulative impact. And I just wanted to point out the irony of, on the one hand, the department saying -- the planning department saying that not very many people will take advantage of this new right, and to use that assumption as the basis for not seeing a cumulative impact, which is by definition incremental -- insignificant incremental changes that are cumulatively considerable, which in English is just, you know, two or three chickens versus hundreds of thousands of chickens. And the irony is that why have this change if there weren't a lot of people asking for it, and on the other hand, saying it won't impact very many people because not very many people use it? So anyway, that's your decision, and I just wanted to point it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Marshall Anderson, and I'm a neighbor of an impacted poultry-raising operation in my neighborhood. I'd like to say that the raising of chickens is a -- creates an attractive nuisance for wildlife and predators and varmints to come into. It creates an insatiable desire in my dog that is caged up and fenced in to dig out of my yard to go over and visit the chickens. And he's been jailed, of which he escaped and spent a night out on the lam along the Truckee River before he was finally returned by a neighbor. And I believe that my background is in plant quarantine, and I believe that bringing in chickens that are undocumented or uninspected by veterinarian services, of which you can buy chickens mail order, and you don't know where they're coming from or you don't know what kind of plant quarantine or quarantine procedures have been done with them, could raise the possibility of an outbreak of Newcastle disease, which is an actionable pest in this state. We've spent many millions of dollars through the Food and Ag Department to try to eradicate it in Southern California, and we don't need to have that in Placer County by an action of our elected officials. It may bring something like that upon us and a liability also. So I don't believe that there is a negative effect of having chickens in a residential area. I believe that they do impact the area through poisons, like the lady said, or through trappings and, you know, and disposal of wildlife unneedably. And I have also gotten a -- like I say, I've had raccoons in my yard quite prevalently for the last 10 years since the chicken farm has been in existence, and I've even had breeding colonies of them under my deck, which I don't really feel like I want. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address the Board?
Good morning, almost -- good afternoon. Rosemary Freeborn, Humane Society of the Sierra foothills. We oppose this proposal for many reasons, but I'm going to pinpoint one, that if this Board finds some merit in this proposal, they will consider taking an amendment, and that amendment would read chickens in residential single-family and residential multifamily zones must be confined to an enclosed structure at all times. I think when one of you suggests that an ordinance needs to be brought forward in a certain instance, that's a very powerful thing, and I think what we get as a result is something that isn't -- hasn't been vetted by all of the people that are going to be affected by this. I want you to think for one moment about downtown Newcastle, high density, small lots, and chickens being raised in an area like that will definitely impact the neighbors. To have them be roaming loose and not confined will have conflicts, and when there are no alternatives for animal control to address those conflicts, such as put your hen -- put your chickens in a coop, it becomes problems that you guys then get telephone calls on. And once we do this, we can't go back -- animal control can't institute a law ex post facto. Once we say that chickens don't need to be put in coops, we can't in three months go back and say now they all need to be put in coops. When they removed the permit process, we no longer have the ability to grandfather those chicken raisers into -- on any new laws that we bring forward. So I think that's very important. And when we talk about state and federal laws and all that, all they say are appropriate food, water, and shelter, and I'll ask you all to define shelter, and you'll all come up with something different. In fact, you know, homeless people will probably take a different -- have a different opinion, but some people say a bush or a tree is a shelter. When you don't give appropriate instructions, it becomes a very problem -- very problemsome. In Chapter 17, it specifically addresses aviaries, both indoor and outdoor aviaries, and that's a very specific building, and an indoor and outdoor aviary must be constructed like this if you're going to raise parrots or finches or any of those other animals. It also says in Chapter 17 -- I'll wrap it up real quickly -- in Chapter 17 that pot-bellied pigs must be kept in a home, believe it or not, or in a residential accessory structure, which is then later defined as a corral, a pen, barn. So there is very specific requirements for enclosing animals, and we hope that you would take an amendment on that if you so choose to move this forward. Are there any questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for action, discussion, questions, anything.
I would like to comment that I think a number of concerns, which may or may not be legitimate, have been raised in this process. It has had a very thorough public vetting. It's gone to all the MACs, it's gone to the Ag Commission, gone to the Planning Commission twice. It's been discussed with all the various departments within the county. I've had dozens and dozens of interactions with people at public events, and I would say most of those interactions have been people saying, "I hear Placer County is moving forward with a hen ordinance. I personally don't want to keep them, but that's great. We should allow people who do want to keep them that right, that opportunity." I see this truly as an opportunity to give people in Placer County, in the unincorporated areas, in the places where there aren't already existing chicken hen ordinances, to give people an additional right. I don't think a lot of people are going to take advantage of it, but I think it is something that those people who want to take advantage of will take advantage of, and they will do, just as we do with dogs and cats and our other pets, exactly what we need to do to ensure the safety of those animals to our very best satisfaction. So I would encourage this Board to adopt this today and move forward with this.
Is that a motion?
I will make that a motion. I move -- let me get to the appropriate language here -- that we approve the mitigated negative declaration and we adopt the ordinance approving zoning text amendment, PZTA 200900403, as recommended by the Planning Commission. In addition to the findings contained within the documentation, I would like to direct staff to, a year from now, go back and just do a review. Look at how it's operated over the year. See if any of these concerns have come to fruition or if, you know, frankly, we're just borrowing trouble. I think it's a legitimate request to say, let's take a look at it in a year and see if any of these, you know, visions of hen apocalypse in the future come to fruition. I don't believe they will, but part of this motion will include a review in a year of any problems that may have arisen from this.
Second, and I just want to comment, I appreciate the fact that you added that direction at the end because I think it's real important. There are some concerns here. If a lot of people do take advantage of it, it would be nice to see what the impact is a year from now, and if, you know, there are any adjustments and additional input or changes that need to be made. So, thank you.
So it's been moved in and seconded to essentially adopt the recommended zoning text amendment, change with the findings, but in addition, come back and report back to the Board in about a year as to observations that staff has made with regards to the implementation.
And adopt the negative.
And adopt the negative deck. Thank you, Tony. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the Board meeting.